Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, August 27, 2019. Now called to order at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by Local Access Programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking any questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without firsts being granted my consent. First standing on our agenda this evening is... A and R plans, we have four. Tinker Hill first.
First one is Tinker Hill Road, they're looking to carve off two multiple lots. These two down here currently are all part of the flat lot.
This is the entrance into the big piece.
They decided to further build that, could be that one down here. So they're 150 feet, about 60 feet.
What is required, is it 180 or is it, is that RC or RR?
180. RR, 180.
If it's RR, it's going to be 180.
Yep. So they're counting 85, 63, and...
Part of the 37.
Radius.
Yeah, you can't count the total radius, you only can count, well, whatever bisects this, the street line, so we can't even go all the way there.
So we get 85. So that's 85, 150, and even half, 150, what's that? Yeah, those are bad. Do you have a calculator there?
So which lots are existing on this?
One, two, three, and then this big one.
Those three lots are part of the big one?
Yep, these three are currently existing.
Okay.
And then the other piece is that, the big one, they're carving those two out of the big one.
These two here.
So they have all that, they're taking these two lots out of it.
Correct.
They're leaving themselves an opening for a subdivision. Who owns it? Still Adam.
Yep.
Proudly. 85.54, 63.39, and how much of the 37 can we take?
At least 50 percent, if not all of it.
How do we know? What is the...
Not sure what the bylaws is.
I don't know what that is. What do you got, 148?
It's about 150, so...
That's 150?
Almost, plus this...
Because I thought it used to be a lot would be considered on the front road and a lot on the road.
Yeah, this lot would be considered on the side road.
So counting this piece here.
This piece right here, if they don't have a dimension on it.
The length is 53.
So if you add this, this, they're over 100.
Good, that one's good.
Yep. So that should be good.
On the Tinker Hill lot, any questions from the members? Nick?
No, just them.
John?
No.
Is there any public comment?
That's my land, I'm just...
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote, it's approved.
You want to sign the bill or...
You can sign the bill, you can file one.
Yep. Thank you very much. Next A and R plan is on Elbit Street.
Good evening, my name's Peter La Boy. I work with Turning Point Engineering, and I'm here representing Eastland Partners. With me tonight is Phil Coraggio from Eastland. So this is the lots that are going to be rearranged, or just the property lines changed on this, is on Elbit Street Extension. There are no additional lots being created, it's just that we rearranged the lot lines, and right now, all the lots have or 69, over 69,000 square feet.
That's the name of your road going into the project? Elbit Street Extension?
Yeah, Elbit Street Extension, correct, yep. And it has the required frontage, and it also has the required, you know, lot regular factor.
So what is it you are looking for, just to have the...
Just to re, we're changing the property lines on 25 Elbit Street, 27 Elbit Street, 29 Elbit Street, and 28 Elbit Street. So we're just changing the lot lines, so now all the lots will have 69,000 square feet in size, but they all have the required frontage as well, 180. There are no additional lots being created.
Yeah, because this one's only got 60, are you going to change it to 69?
No, this is just a detention basin, Parcel C is just for, so that's not a building of a lot.
69, yeah. So these are all over, but just...
Correct, yep.
That's the way they're staying, 75, 88, 95.
Yep, 88, 75, and then 69 is Lot 4, or 27. So they all have over 69,000 square feet. Before, they were a little under, like 60, you know, like Lot 4 was 63, they want 60, they want all the lots to be over the 69,000.
Who's "they"?
Eastland Partners. They own the land.
So what was the property line here between Parcel C and Lot 5 before? This is the new...
That's the new configuration, correct.
Right, what was the old one? And why are we changing the property lines? What's the purpose of it?
It was like this. I guess they wanted to give more area to Parcel C for the basin.
Okay, that explains that one, what about the rest?
The rest, they were, they were narrow, and they, they have a specific house style that they want to put on the lot, and it didn't, it wouldn't fit, so that's what they...
So you're changing...
Just changing...
Parcel C and 5?
Yep.
And you're changing 3 and 4?
3, 4, and 2. Lot 2 right here is also...
Parcel C, 3, 4, and 2.
Correct, yep, the only one that's not changing is Lot 1. That one's staying the same.
That's long and skinny too, but that's all right.
That's the original?
Correct, yep, this is the original, it's the same size. Nothing's changed on that one.
Oh, I'm just looking to see where the change is on Lot 2 besides the, the indication of, I think that's wetlands up there.
Correct, I think, I think the lot line between 3 and 4 changed with the, with the easement. I think if you look, the lot line went like this before, now it goes over here, because they wanted, this one only had 63,000 square feet, so they wanted 69, so I had to redo, redo the lot lines to get it.
180 feet of frontage. And they all got the 180 feet of frontage?
Correct.
The wetland delineation up in that left-hand corner looks different from that one to this one a bit, not a lot, but some of it.
I think it's, I think it's because it was rotated. It should be the same wetland line.
Should be.
Yeah, this one show, oh, this one...
They're at a slightly different angle.
Yeah, they're at a different angle, the property, it's like this, if you look at the two plans, so it is at a different angle.
The road doesn't change.
But the, the plan itself, the, the plan changed.
Orientation.
The orientation of the road changed.
You changed the orientation of the road as well?
No, no, just on paper.
On paper.
See how the road is like this?
Yeah.
Big question, so it's, it's, that's the only reason why you, the wetlands looks different.
No, following the line of the wetlands, I know that the property lines are different, but that line does not seem to match that line on the upper left-hand corner here, your lower right.
Yep, no, I do see that.
Looks a little different. So the wetlands can't change?
No.
Appears to be different. Maybe you just didn't carry it as far on the old plan as you did on the new plan.
Yeah, it, it lines right up, the Mylon lines right up on the two wetlands.
Can I see that all better for a second, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so C took from 20, Lot 5?
Correct.
And Lot 4? And he took 3,000 from Lot 3 for Lot 4?
I took 6,000, because it went from 63 to 69.
60,000, 6,000 from 3 and gave it to 4?
Yeah, I think it's, it's the combination between taking it from, from 5 and 3.
You took 6 from 3 when it had the 63?
No, it was 63 originally, and now it's 69.
69.
I don't know, I don't know where I took, actually, I don't know where exactly I took the land.
Well, they all have over, they gotta have over 60.
Right, right, they're over, they're all over 60.
We met with...
We met the area, we meet the area in frontage.
Where it came from, Newport.
Took 10,000 from 2, and... And added, been adding to 1.
This access and utility easement at the end of the cul-de-sac goes, just runs into the wetlands?
That is correct, yep, same as the original plan.
So how can you access it?
It was on the definitive plant, the definitive plan, I kept it on, I didn't change that.
You changed the length of it, and you had to change the width of it to get the, the land into 3.
It still should be 60, 60 square feet with the 10-foot temporary, I mean, nothing's, it's the same dimensions, it's still 60-foot wide, access and utility, and then there's all, an additional 10-foot temporary grade easement on the outside.
Yeah, because this has dimensions on the southeast side and the northwest side, that doesn't, so that's why it's confusing, you have a centerline dimension there and not here on the old plan, that's why it's confusing. I can see how you moved it...
Right, I moved it to the center, yep.
Now I get it.
Nick?
No.
Scott?
Just a question, do we need to make a ruling if it's a minor modification?
Just a day or...
So, okay, yeah, it's not a modification of the existing, it's just a... What's up?
John? Is there any public comment on the A and R plan for Elbit Street Extension? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next A and R plan is for 272 Bryn Mawr Ave.
So on this one, they're carving this big lot, pretty much in half, the jog.
See what I got there, Adam?
So about this, this is a current existing house, it's a current...
That's someone else's house.
So the middle one, the middle two are all one lot.
There's a strip of land, there's this house, then there's a strip of land, then this is the house near the street?
Yeah, yes.
And then your original house is way down off, do you have, still have that other house, the original one?
Which one are you referring to?
Where you, when...
Okay, we're at 278, I own 272 and 280.
280 will be down, down here.
Okay.
278.
So you're just putting this property line in here?
I'm just orienting, yep. Well, if they're changing this, I think they're, they're going to keep this as one, this is going to be all one, from the original White House over to Mallett is going to be all one lot, right?
Yes.
With this angle cut into it and going down?
Correct.
And this will be another lot you'll have here?
Yes, that's the one we lived in.
Where you live, and then your father was there, he lived down here.
He lived at 280, did you know my dad?
Yep.
When you said dad, I figured you must have.
So now we're going to have three lots, 1, 2, 3?
So that's just going to be creating a new lot out of this one piece, so this is going from one lot to two lots.
Correct.
No, it's not going from one lot to two lots, it's, it's changing the border lines between 272 and 278.
Right, yep. This is combining with that.
Okay.
Lot to be our line.
Yeah, we're just moving over towards the house.
We're taking more property for ourselves.
Right, for the, right.
For the 278 address.
So the barn will serve your property?
The barn will be on our property, correct.
Yes, exactly, right.
My father made the crazy line before because he wanted the barn there and...
That's where it went?
Yep, that's where he wanted it, and you don't argue with dad.
And I had to give him enough so he cut my driveway in half, so he owns half of my driveway, so that's why we're moving a lot.
He's not a live donor anymore.
I know, I know, but that's, well, we couldn't buy the property unless we agreed to it.
Yeah, I know.
Nick?
No.
Steve? Scott? John? Good. Do we have a motion to approve, or is there any public comment on this? There being none, do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote.
Good luck.
Were you a people's lawyer in Auburn? Did you come to my house?
Yep.
I thought you were.
John?
Where do we go now to Reg. 75, Worcester, what's the name of the place?
Worcester, Manchester.
Worcester, Manchester. Worcester, Manchester, and where is that?
I think so, if you go right past City Hall, if you were going down Main Street, City Hall would be on your right, you take the next right on the front street.
Not by the front street.
Yeah, if you go right down, is the CBS still there on the corner?
Yes.
Adam, I'm going to put the date.
It's on the corner of Front and Commercial Streets, right there, when you go, take the right at City Hall, that's front, that's the first building after Commercial Street.
Okay. Do you remember where the, the Worcester Galleria was, where the...
Yeah, oh, yes, oh, yeah.
It's now the registry.
It is?
Now, I came in late, so do you get my Mylon?
It's inside.
It's inside, yeah. When I came in late, they were shot-handed, and the people that really knew the job were in that day. I just left everything there, just to be safe. Where is it? Oh, okay. Now, do we have any other?
You got these coming, bud.
I got everything I'm supposed to have now?
Yeah, I'll file these, probably a term in town hall tomorrow.
So I don't have to do anything more, I don't have to wait for anything more?
How many copies do you have? I think I got one extra.
He's after copy.
He gave us, he gave us a C F.
I think five.
Yeah, it is five, yeah, okay. Four, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Five, thank you.
Oh, okay.
I gotta get one more copy.
Oh, okay, all three is right.
I have one for ourselves.
Yep.
In case somebody lost it.
Put it in the, put it in the safe.
I don't want, yeah, you can't, that does...
Should have stepped down. Then you can get it back. Because they have a safe, they want it for the date. Is it legal?
They took five lines on one side.
I know, I know. Cool.
Big old J, and they got it comes down.
That's not yours. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next A and R plan is Elbit Street. I'm just orienting, yep. Well, if they're changing this, I think they're, they're gonna keep this as one. This is gonna be all one, from the original White House over to Mallett is gonna be all one lot, right?
Yes.
With this angle cut into it and going down.
Correct.
And this will be another lot you'll have here.
That's the one we live in.
Where you live, and then when your father was there, he lived down here.
He lived at 280. Did you know my dad?
Yep.
When you said dad, I figured you must have.
So now we're gonna have three lots, one, two, three?
So that's just gonna be a new lot, and this one piece, so this is going from one lot to two lots.
Correct.
No, it's not going from one lot to two lots, it's, it's changing the border lines between 272 and 278.
Right, yep. This is combining with that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just moving over towards the house.
We're taking more property for ourselves.
Right, for the, right.
For the 278 address.
So the barn will serve your property?
The barn will be our property, correct.
Right.
My father made the crazy line before because he wanted the barn there and...
That's where he wanted it?
Yep, that's where he wanted it, and you don't argue with dad.
And I had to give him enough so he cut my driveway in half, so he owns half of my driveway.
Well, he's not a live donor anymore.
I know, I know, but that's, well, we couldn't buy the property unless we agreed to it.
Yeah, I know.
Nick?
No.
Steve? Scott? John? Good. We have a motion to approve, or is there any public comment on this? There being none, we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second? All those in favor? Aye, there's a vote. Good luck.
Were you a people client, Auburn? Did you come to my house?
Yep.
I thought you were.
John?
Where do we go now to register the deed, the Worcester, what's the name of the place?
Pardon?
Worcester, Manchester, Deeds.
Worcester, Manchester, Deeds, and where is that?
If you go right past City Hall, if you were going down Main Street, City Hall would be on your right, you take the next right on Front Street.
Not by the Front Street.
Yeah, if you go right down, is the CBS still there on the corner?
Adam, I'm gonna put the date.
It's on the corner of Front and Commercial Streets, right there, when you go, take the right at City Hall, that's Front Street, that's first building after Commercial Street.
Okay.
Do you remember where the, the Worcester Galleria was, where the?
Yeah, oh, yeah, so, yeah.
The important is now the registry.
It is?
Now, I came in late, so do you get my mileage?
Inside.
It's inside, yeah. When I came in late, they were shot-handed, and the people that really knew the job were, were in that day. I just left everything there, just to be safe.
Here, file a copy.
Where is it? Oh, okay. Now, do we have any other?
You got these coming, bud.
I got everything I'm supposed to have now?
Yeah, I'll file these, probably at the time of the town hall tomorrow.
So I don't have to do anything more, I don't have to wait for anything?
How many copies do you have? I think I got one extra.
He's actually copying.
He gave us, he gave us a C F.
I think five.
Yeah, it is five, yeah. Four, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Five more.
Oh, okay.
I gotta get one more copy.
Oh, okay. Oh, please, right.
I have one for ourselves.
Yep.
In case somebody loses it.
Put it in the, put it in the safe.
I don't want, yeah.
Six of five lines on one side.
I know, I know.
Cool. Yeah.
Big old J, and then it comes down.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next day in our plan is Hillbridge Street.
So, on this particular one, um, this is...
Is the applicant, are you the applicant, or, well, are they in name, please, Gary Bertrand? Anything else?
So this one, um, this is a big parcel currently, I'm looking to carve out one lot for a, for a house lot.
Can we bring this up on the overhead? Can we bring this up on the overhead side of the right, Michael?
Right.
Just pass the part. To the other side of the wall.
Are the Christmas trees there?
No, they're down over there. No, it's right behind the...
Anderson.
He'll be in the... Pico?
Go right there, the Christmas, it used to be, uh...
So it's this piece right here?
Yep, it's about always.
And the house should be right about a lot, you're right, about here?
Zone.
Um...
Is Don Postel's house?
Uh, no, his is right next door.
It's to the left of him, right, where his original house was?
Off the street, he's to the right of this parcel.
Okay.
So it's, it's a car seat, that's 160 feet.
It's about a forty thousand? Yeah.
What's 160 feet of frontage?
Hundred and sixty feet of frontage, and forty thousand square feet.
Yeah, he's got 193 feet of frontage.
Plus sixteen.
Sixteen, we've got, uh, about forty-six thousand.
It's 210 square pop. On the road, and he's got forty-six thousand.
Any questions? Nick?
No.
Any public comment on this? There being none, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote.
I'll send it.
Thank you very much.
Dom Ross was on the top of the address.
That was Mark and... I'll wait till it gets...
Here we have a... We have a 7:05 PM public hearing. 711 Southridge Street, Domino's, requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.5.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for a restaurant use, Domino's Pizza, on property located at 711 Southridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 61 parcels 37. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the hearing?
Second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Hearing is open. The African present?
Yes.
It seems that there are points of water tonight, if you're a former paper boy, so I just wanted to let you know I was a former paper boy. My name is Bill Mohan, I'm a licensing and permitting consultant, and I'm working tonight with SNL Pizza, Inc. I have Ms. Sarah Andre, who's the president of SNL Pizza, Inc., with 11 years of experience with Domino's, and decided to jump into the deep end of the pool and become a franchise owner. We have submitted plans, we think we submitted everything that was needed. We did have a situation, I'm sure you're gonna be getting to the grease trap issue, in the sense that you had talked about this being a restaurant, we are not a restaurant. By law and by code, pizza shops in Massachusetts are bakeries. We don't, we don't cook anything. You will never find a restaurant that opens up that has four seats in it. Have to charge an awful lot to make that profitable. Domino's is a very unique situation, more than 90% of our business is delivery, we take it to you. We put three or four seats in there, in case there are people that are coming to pick up their pizza and it isn't ready, they can sit down, they have a place to sit. I talked with, and unfortunately, I was, I was aware, I was out of the country when, when the Sewer Board considered our application for the waiver. And a document was produced with Domino's logo on it that reached conclusions that projections for grease regenerated at this location were considerably more than what we had, we had set. When we went to the, when I get back, when we went to the Sewer Commission and we went to Domino's, first of all, they, they immediately wanted to send me that letter, send me that list, show us what they saw. And it's a document that was prepared in 2013. I actually called the gentleman who created the letter, who no longer works for, hasn't worked for Domino's, I think nine years. Says he can't believe the stuff is still going out with his name on it. And he said, well, this isn't accurate, and they drew up a new, and, and we presented this to the Sewer, Sewer Board on Friday, and they said, we will take this, we'll take it under advisement, and we'll redetermine what our feeling is about the external grease trap. I, I represent an awful lot of Domino's franchises in Massachusetts, most of them, most of the franchises in the city of Boston I deal with. We have one gentleman that I work with, his name is David Jenks, he's the president of Boston Pie, Inc. He's the largest franchise owner of Domino's in New England, has approximately 40 franchises that run from the South Shore, all the way up to Portland, Maine. And I talked to David about this, and he says, yep, he says, this happens sometimes in, in towns that have regulations that say all restaurants have to have an external grease trap, number one, we're not a restaurant, we don't make grease. We don't have utensils that we have to wash, everything is plastic, it's throwaway, it's throwaway, everything, if people were gonna eat in, in the unlikely capacity that, that someone would come in and say, we wanna sit down at one of those two tables and eat something, that's fine. They're using plastic material, and that's going into the dumpster, not into, into the, into the grease trap. So when I talked to David about it, he says, well, tell him about Roxbury and tell him about Fenway Park. And Fenway Park is the fifth highest producing Domino's in the country, over $2 million dollars of business a year. Roxbury Crossing is the third highest Domino's in the country, again, over $2,000, $2 million dollars a year. Neither one has an external grease trap, and they don't need it, because we do not produce grease, period. David said, we have three small towns that absolutely insisted we put in the grease trap. And so we said, okay, you want the grease trap, we'll put in an external grease trap. We check those out once every five years, once every five years, it's just, we do not have any grease, we do not have any grease. And so we're in a situation where we've got a young couple who are starting out in their first franchise, and we're gonna ask them to spend about $15,000 to put something in that's never gonna be used. And we honestly don't think that's right. So, I mean, that's the reason we're asking for the waiver, and I don't know if the Sewer Board made a read to...
We would have to get a recommendation from whatever board, whether it's sewer, code enforcement, Board of Health, that, that we would wanna see prior to, that they're fine with it, and they're okay, and they know they're not gonna... I mean, I can understand it myself, I don't, I think, oh, everyone can understand it, but we would probably wanna see that before we grant what that determination would be, before we...
Yeah, their, their determination a couple of weeks ago was to acquire the external, I know you wouldn't, see if they can reconsider that.
They, they said that they would reconsider that, based on, based on the new information that they got, and the fact that the, the information they based their decision on was incorrect, and, and...
So we'll have to wait to see that.
Okay.
We would wanna see that.
Okay.
So that would affect the...
We, we want the committee to understand.
We bring it before these other boards and everything, and it's a process, so if any of them have anything to say, and if, you know, we, if, we don't wanna fault by not taking a recommendation. If, I can understand you, I agree with what you've said, and probably everyone else does, but we need to have them say it to us, and then we'll be fine with it.
And we want the board to know that, that, uh... Even if they absolutely stamp their foot and say, we're not gonna do anything unless we have an external grease trap, we will go with that, but it's...
Right, but you'd prefer not to.
We would prefer not to, yes. So that's, that's, that's where we are, so. So if, if, we said, okay, we'll put in the external grease trap, we're saying that your vote would be to approve.
We haven't taken that vote yet.
No, I know, but it's...
It's an independent board.
And, uh... And if, if the Sewer Commission and the, and the Board of Health sends, send you, I, I thought for sure they would probably notify you before today, but I guess not.
The last notification that I had, and I think it was in the...
It's in the package.
Was that they were requiring an external grease trap house last night.
Of what time was that?
Two weeks ago, I want to say.
And you talked about since then?
I don't know how often the Sewer Commission is, probably once a month. I don't have any... The only other two early items on this particular site plan was the parking, you showed on your plan, and the dumpster. Aside from the grease trap, I think that's the only thing I've seen.
Aren't parked? Aren't they parked?
Yeah, oh, I gotta...
Drainage is already there, I spoke to you about that, everything's, everything's already there.
And we will have, we will have a dumpster in the back of the, of the building. We have already talked about, uh, talked with AAA of the possibility of getting eight cubic yard dumpster instead of two fours, and just splitting the cost and, and doing that on a weekly basis. They're located in Auburn, and we're trying to find, you know, local people that can, that we can work with, because we just like to do that, but...
They're also, they're gonna talk to the owner of the parking lot about where they stack the smoke?
Uh, they are gonna be stacking it someplace else, I already have done that.
Nick?
Nothing.
Steve?
So, mostly delivery business, can you explain where the delivery drivers go into the building, where they park?
There are so many parking spaces in the front of the store, they'll probably park right there. Right in the fire lane and just running and out, or... Yeah. And it's, uh... You know, that parking is the last, I think I said to somebody, they, they understand we're in a mall, right? I mean, it's, the, the parking is, for a company that has so few people coming to the store to pick up, I mean, basically, we're gonna have more drivers than we'll have cars pulling in to pick up their pizza, but there, there's plenty of spots, there's plenty of spots. I think there were, I counted at least eight that are directly in front of her, and the other thing too is that, that, uh... With Domino's, the vast majority of our business is from five o'clock on. the vast majority of our business is from five o'clock on of the day. And AAA next door closes, I think, at five, five or six. Not five. And so, they won't have any, they won't be taking any parking spaces in the front. So we've got tons of parking. Wish we had that much parking in every franchise, but we don't.
So my concern's more with the fire lane there, and delivery drivers just pulling up to the fire lane and going, running in and out?
Well, we just make sure that doesn't happen.
And there's not a second entrance for drivers around the side?
Nope.
And they won't be using the back?
Nope, just the only thing that can be out in the back is the dumpster.
Scott?
Where's the dumpster?
We have a back door, and AAA has a back door, and it's gonna be right between the two of them.
You found it?
You found it? Technology, wonderful.
Elon?
Couple things. You say all your food is prepared with no flame, and everything's baked, that's not true. You have fried chicken wings.
That's pre-cooked. It's heated. It's heated, all we're doing is heating up.
They get extra crispy by just heating them up. And then the other thing I didn't see on the plans was automatic trap primers for floor drains.
What, I'm sorry?
Automatic trap primers for the floor drains. That's a code.
If it's in code and we need it, it'll be there.
You're gonna need it, 'cause the plumbing inspector's gonna catch that.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
If we're talking about paperboys, I'm an ex-Domino's employee back in the day, and it's definitely...
For you?
No frying.
Does he have to excuse himself for that, or is it okay? It's a long family. Almost as long ago as I was a paperboy.
So, will, we have a mo... Is there any public comment on this? There being none, do we have a motion for a continuance to September 10th?
Yeah.
Can we conditionally approve, based on sewer requirement?
So, motion to approve? I mean, motion to continue to September 10th?
I'll make a motion to continue till September 10th.
Second?
I, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. We'll see on September 10th. You might prompt that department to make sure that they have a recommendation to us by the...
I will be... The Board of Health and two of them tomorrow. And we are hiring, by the way, if you...
He's gonna need a job.
Full empire. Thank you.
We're all sharing, I'm still not, also, hey, thank you.
How's the summer casual for the close hours?
There we have a 7:10 public hearing. The applicant is ABP, Inc., Troy Sports Bar, requesting site plan approval under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the extension of a non-conforming use, a proposed deck on property located at 125 Oxford Street North, Map 10, Parcel 82. This hearing has been continued from 7/23/19. There is also a waiver request, Troy Sports Bar, 125 Oxford Street North, lighting plan, landscape plan, traffic study, documentation of availability and adequacy of water in sewer. We have a request...
Request for continue to go on conservation tomorrow night?
To, so, do we have a motion? Is there any public comment on this? Do we have a motion to continue this to September 10th?
Make the motion to to September 10th.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. We have a 7:15. Applicant Webster Five Cent Savings Bank, SPA, with waivers under Section 3.2.6.0 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for a medical office use on property located at 35 Milbury Street, Auburn, Map 42, Parcel 21. Yes, we still gotta call.
Just wanna make sure. I'll make the motion, open the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ray, should we have the names?
Yes.
We don't have the guy in the right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Did you make the motion to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Attorney Todd Broder from Fletcher Tilton here on behalf of the applicant Webster Five Cent Savings Bank. With me is Don Doyle. Don's with the bank, and he's available to answer any questions about the operation or what's proposed there. But I'm gonna run through kind of a brief summary and just let you know why we're here. Talking about the project at 35 Milbury Street, this is the old Fallon Clinic or Alliant Medical Center, which, as you know, has recently relocated to the Auburn Mall, and this property lies vacant and in need of some upgrades and a user. Therein comes Webster Five, which would like to use this as an operations center. Commercial loan officers and operations folks would work out of this facility, about 100 employees. This would be a consolidation of three different facilities. There's one already existing in Auburn, which houses about 40 employees right now.
Just to be clear, it's actually our corporate headquarters.
Yeah. And then, there's a few operations centers that are smaller in nature that would be relocated to this location. This wouldn't impact the branch that's on Southbridge Street, and there would be no retail operation at this facility. So this is for your operations folks, your management folks, and the like. We had, we were in need of a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, which we applied for, for a change of a non-conforming use. Received that special permit, therefore, we trigger your requirement under the zoning bylaw for site plan approval. So we are here. We requested just about every waiver I think we could request, because the idea here is no physical changes to the property itself, except for the building once the bank gets in there and owns the property and figures out floor plan and whatnot. So, there'll be building permit work at that point. There may be some facade changes, but a lot of that's unknown at the moment. So, the plan is to reuse it exactly like it is, with exits, entrances, parking. The desire would be long-term to probably pull back some of the parking. Don't think the bank doesn't think they need all of that parking. So that might open up the opportunity for more green space. But at least as of right now, they would leave it as-is, the entirety of the site, and do work to the inside of the building.
We didn't have any, no, we don't know of any problems or anything with that site that anyone spoke of, but...
The line hasn't been gone that long.
No. And if you can imagine the number of visits to that site versus an operations center for a bank, it's a significant reduction in trips to the site, so those concerns, I think, would be lessened with this use. Happy to answer any questions we have?
White line here.
I think it's just a parcel line, but it's not meant to be a division of any sort. There's a, you can see the wetland that's there, and then the green space would be left alone. This is just, simply, I took this from an environmental assessment report that was done. As there's really nothing modern, there's no modern site plans available for the site.
To the left of the white line?
Yes.
Here's the center right here where it's got here. And it's got, what is that line?
Nothing.
Is this gonna be a separate parcel?
No.
They're gonna keep separate?
No.
That's wet, yeah, but...
It is, it's in the back left as you look at it, it's all, it's wet back there. The parking up front, obviously, is...
So, Bill, but this parking will stay that little leg?
The plan for right now is to leave that alone.
To just leave that alone?
Yep. Obviously, if we make, if there's modifications that are made to the site in terms of peeling back pavement or anything of that nature, we come back for a real site plan at that point.
No questions at all? Is there any public comment on this? We have a request. The applicant is requesting a waiver for topography, lighting, landscaping, site plan prepared by a professional engineer, drainage, drainage calculations. Todd, do you have a site plan that was from the other people that was for the site?
There's a, I think there's a record of a really old one from like 96 that was on file. I'm sorry?
From Fallon.
Yes.
Through the registry reviews.
There wasn't, I don't think there was anything at the registry, but on file with the town, because there was at one point a site plan done.
Steve, no questions? John?
No, no question.
Do we have a motion to approve the waivers?
I'll make the motion to approve the waivers.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve the site plan?
I'll make the motion to approve the site plan.
Second.
Aye, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
We have a 7:20 applicant, SZLL Realty LLC, a definitive subdivision plan for a 13-lot, single-family home development on property located at 178 Hampton Street and 19 Eaton Avenue, Map 12, Parcel 120. This hearing has been continued from 7/23/19. We have a request for a continuance?
Yes, I am received yesterday morning their response to the peer review. There's the comments, I haven't received the fresh site plans yet. They said they're gonna get them to me next week, so they'll have them for the next meeting.
I'm sure all of you have seen it, because I saw, when I looked at it, I thought I saw several lots that had inadequate frontage.
You know them?
So, anyways, Steve, any questions? Nick?
None.
Do we have a motion to continue to September 10th?
Make a motion. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ray, Sean recused from that vote.
We have a 7:25 public hearing, Strategic Behavioral Solutions requesting site plan approval for private educational use under Section 3.2.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws at 390 Southridge Street, Auburn, Map 33, Parcel 85. They're also requesting a waiver at 390 Southridge Street, Auburn, Strategic Behavioral Solutions, topography, lighting, site plan prepared by a professional engineer, landscape, and drainage. The applicant present?
Yes.
A motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is open.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name's Todd Rodman, I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Cedar and Chandler in Worcester, Mormon Hill. Of course, I thank you from the last hearing. With us tonight are Arian Kodwa and Eko Agora, who are the principals of Strategic Behavioral Solutions, and also Jill McGrail Mahar, who's the executive director of the...
Are you gonna present?
Yes. Our client currently runs a counseling center for families with autistic children. They have 18 employees there. And they operate after-school hours, so after 3 o'clock into the evening hours. And what they're proposing is to offer a new service to autistic children. They like to teach the autistic children during the daytime hours. So, they currently have 18 employees that report for work after 3 o'clock. And then, those 18 employees will be different employees for this new service that they're offering. So, they would employ teachers to teach the children during the day. And they estimate they'll have five to 10 employees. So, they're using the same building, so they're not looking to do any construction on the building, occupy the same space that they do in the evening for the counseling. They like to use that space during the day for education. So, there'll be no requirements for any need of additional parking, and no requirements for any construction. And so, I'd be happy to answer any questions we have.
Were you showing the last time that you talked about the parking area to the rear of the motel, which is right like where the word "Cocos" is?
Yes, right in this area here, you can see it looks to be gravel and leaves.
Yeah.
But that's all been scraped away. They cut back, the brush has been cut back. And they have coated it, seal-coated it, and they have striped it with parking skis.
Was it asphalt or was it gravel?
It was asphalt.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, if I...
Yes.
Well, it looks like there's some asphalt, some crutch stone, some loom, or dirt. So it's not all asphalt.
We have a photo we can show you of what it looks like.
If I can, Mr. Chairman. So here's effectively a before picture. There's apparently gravel and soil accumulation on top of asphalt. It has been scraped back to expose the asphalt, and the asphalt has been essentially spray-coated and striped just to clean it up and to show the boundaries of the parking lot.
I would estimate that this rear area went unused for many years, maybe 20 or 30 years. And so, you've had 20 or 30 years of leaves and sediment and everything just piled on top. In fact, the first plan that we gave to you, we showed this area, is being all gravel. But then, our clients went out and scraped it away and found asphalt underneath that gravel and underneath those leaves.
Ron, can you show us on there how far back it actually goes?
Well, you've got two pictures here, saying one's before and one's after.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, those are the before. This is the current. This is the current, yes. Do you wanna point it out on this?
Can I ask when the lot was cleaned and then, hold it? Last two weeks, three weeks?
Last two weeks.
Last two weeks?
Bill's, he goes hard, it's fourteen. I don't know.
That's the only thing is they wiped, striped it anyways, well.
The stripe was finished about days ago.
Well, there were some questions. There was comment by the town engineer that the back parking lot is not all pavement. Need to submit a plan clearly defining the existing edge of pavement and the proposed striping. I believe the previous plan showed triple, showed striping on non-paved areas. And you have to have a permit in order to stripe it, not seal coat it, but stripe it. And you didn't, did you have a permit to do that?
No. That's the site plan.
No.
We're asking, are we the site plan? Are we the site plan?
To allow the waiver for that they already striped it?
Not to stripe it. They're asking, when they submitted the site plan, those, they're gonna be re-stripping the lot. That was their site plan.
Back configuration exactly, right, so reconfiguration now.
I don't know.
This is more squared off in the back.
Yeah.
Excuse us, Chairman?
Yes.
So, there are five businesses that operate at this site right now. And on our plan, we, using your zoning bylaws, we calculate how many spaces would be appropriate for each business. And we come up to a hundred and nine spaces would be required for your zoning regulations.
For those five uses?
Yes, sir, combined. And so one oh nine required, and we're showing a hundred and twenty-one spaces on this site. Also, I, I got the call yesterday that they had seal-coated, finished cleaning up and striped the parking lot. So I sent my survey crew out there yesterday afternoon, and we surveyed it. And I have a plan for you here now that shows exactly the bounty of the pavement and the striping that's done. Wherever you see a, a black line, that's where they're striped. Wherever you see a red line, that's not striped yet, but could be striped soon.
Black is striped, red is not.
Yes, so I put you two copies of this, and we actually surveyed.
Take all the time out of it. That's gotta be in by last Thursday.
I know. I know.
Steve, any comments?
We have a lot of temporary use for that education piece without approving this, so I don't know. Well, not a lot of it has to be whole package. No, nothing further.
Scott?
Town engineers' comments are almost moot now. The new plan, it seems to have satisfied, but I can't speak for them.
Right, not to interrupt you, Scott. We don't know what you looked at. If you look after, after it was sealed and striped, it may not be happening today. You look at it just before it was sealed and striped.
He talks about the survey boundaries.
They just striped it the last two days.
If you look at his, right, fifteen. Two weeks ago was a thirteen, so did you look at it at twelve, eleven? They think that's...
Was it striped after the fourteen?
I don't know. It's about two weeks ago.
Yes, they finished yesterday.
Yes, they did.
About what, five minutes ago? You said it was two weeks ago.
They started the cleaning, and the whole project, the stripe managed to finish yesterday. Took a couple of days.
Well, I think the board maybe would like to have the opportunity to go by and look at it and just see what it is and to get an answer back from the town engineer and highway surveyor to see exactly what they mean. Look at what it is in your asking, because if this is gonna be, we have to look at what the site plan was and make sure. Is there any drainage in that existing?
No, there are no catch pieces.
You know, because if it's something that's gonna be additional that wasn't with any of the other site plans, there's a brook that runs in the back there.
There's a pipe that runs under this area.
It's an open brook to a point, and then it, it's probably a pipe under here.
Yes, sir.
And then it goes out, and probably, I don't know where it goes after that. Probably into Dunn's Brook. It might go into culverts underground, under the athletic field into Dunn's Brook. So, Nick, would you like to have the opportunity to go and look and wait for the answer from the town engineer?
Yeah, I mean, just have Bill confirm that what he addressed is done. I mean, it does, I, it seems to me like that's the case already, but...
Yeah, it might be, but we just... Steve?
No comments. I honestly think it's, it's fine, being that things were done a little bit out of turn, and we just saw this now, and this seems to be outdated. I'd like to, just to look at it and determine things as it should be.
I agree. I don't think it's the use, or it's not, not the use with me or anything like that. It's just making sure that we have this part right.
Sure.
So, I don't think there's any problem with what you're gonna do there. It's probably a real good thing, but...
Yeah.
We just gotta make sure that we have this.
When's the proposed opening for the educational piece?
Again, we can't open first. Can't open without, obviously with the site plan approval, and then there's a, a short state window to get the final inspection and everything opened up, which...
So we have another meeting on September tenth.
Okay.
So that's pretty quick.
That, that's great. Okay.
And if you see something that you think needs to be, be done, please let us know, all right? We'll get it done.
Yeah, well, you talked to Bill about this and drainage. Does it, did it have it? Was it splooshed or, or was there anything? Does it not lead to the brook? If there's no questions, so we have them back, they can be on their way.
No storage, no storage in all nine yards.
Well, we gotta, if, if it's right and we can let them use these, they get a hundred and nine. They need a hundred and nine, they get a hundred and twenty-one. There's plenty of room to push the snow up there.
There's a lot of room for snow storage. Would you like us to submit this any other way? With an email?
Yeah, if I could get additional copies of the plans.
By email or, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Directly.
Yes. Do we have any public comment? Could you state your name, please?
Sure, my name is Nancy Angola and I'm a neighbor. I live in Kansas. And my concern is what a school would bring for the traffic on Hal Street. It's already very congested, and it's already a safety issue. I can't get home sometimes because of the drive-through traffic to the Dunkin' Donuts. I can't get up the street. I get stuck in a traffic line. If I try to go around it, I can get met down this way. My concern is added volume that maybe perhaps a school would bring.
How many?
I'm just not sure how much traffic that section can hold.
Mr. Chairman, we can let the executive director of the school speak to that?
I think that's a valid concern and a standard concern.
Thank you.
One, there's two times of the day, the drop-off and pick-up for the children. So the school hours are ninety-three, where there will be some increased traffic. And we have gone, we've looked at that very, very carefully. So like the opening hours and the closing hours of the school are in relation to the traffic for Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
So, we...
Here's now, well, there's, I know that we know about the time, but you know, it's not a point that they can show up anytime. You know, Dunkin' Donuts, you can't, you can't say when they're gonna come.
So can I just explain?
You're bored?
So, the drop-off and pick-up time will be like a ten-minute window time. So, that's very brief. And we have looked at the, where the children will be dropped off and where, where they'll be picked up to, to very much minimize any additional traffic. So there is a side door to the building, on the left of the building, as you face it, so that we won't have to, to go through the parking lot if that seems like that will minimize the traffic. So, we are, you know, day by day, we'll be looking at that. When the school opens, it will be just a few children. As it starts to increase enrollment, we may need to change the traffic pattern. And to speak to having people in and out during the day, that would be very, very minimal, maybe one thing we are... So if you look at the traffic that's there right now, as I showed on the screen, it would be, there's not anywhere that would happen. Because I don't know actually if you're...
It doesn't make me feel better, what you just said, because I still feel that regardless, I can't get up the street as it is. So just adding any more, I'm just not sure how much more the street can hold. I, I mean, I had trusted that the, the new drive-through would take care of it, and it has not. So, I'm stuck now, not being able to get home, and sometimes not being able to get down. Because when I go down, the drive-through line is so long, I can't see to get out, and it's a safety issue. It, it is a safety issue. So to add more onto that, it really does concern me because I live there, and I am speaking on behalf of all of my neighbors.
I know we probably went over this, but what's the maximum amount of students?
I believe the total number is thirty.
Okay.
A day?
Thirty, a total, for the day, yes.
And are you already doing something in that area anywhere?
Well, there's already counseling going on at the...
Which is, how many people are there?
After three o'clock.
The surveys are after school, so most of the, there's more than office space where the surveys have been done in home. So there's not as much traffic, people coming in and out. So unless there's an office meeting once in a while. But the primary business is people going, the, the clients' houses, which are not located in the facility, in the fair. Only the weekend sometimes we do social events, but only on Saturdays, and that's it. So it's not a very heavy traffic of the office, we say, in the current business.
Is there still a driveway that comes off of Hal and goes in and back of Strawberry's, right in by these trees? By the end of that building, there used to be a driveway up in here?
Still there, yeah.
Okay. Are you, do you use that at all?
No, we don't. Currently, no.
We can't get to it.
Well, yeah, it goes over ground, up there and around that end of the building.
Yeah, you're easy.
Used to go out onto Hal.
It's not gonna decrease the traffic.
Have you ever seen that?
Pardon, I'm sorry.
It's the building, it's the, at the end of, if you're going up Hal and Strawberry's is on your right?
Yes.
There's a driveway at the end of Strawberry's building? It might be all blocked up or...
Perhaps it might be, um...
Because I always thought there was a driveway there that went in.
Yeah, I know. People are exit, just coming up from Southford Street, going up to Hal, and this is where the drive-through. And then you have people coming out of the bank right there, too. So if you get stuck, and then if you come up, you try to go around the line, or you sit in it, and then the bank is coming out, and plus then you can get met this way, too, as you head on. And it's frightening to me, a lot.
Adam, can you make a note to talk to Bill about that situation in Dunkin' Donuts?
Not only that, but they're, I know they're lining up on Route twelve.
And they're lining up on the state highway?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
That's not a human area of Dunkin' Donuts.
Thank you so much for hearing.
So a few, we, we, we don't have a lot of purview from this board to do it, but we can request that the town engineer and the code enforcement, maybe, or whoever in the state highway take a look at that area. That's all we can do.
Even with the schools, gotta be less traffic in there than when kids clean this was in there.
And the strawberries.
Strawberries, yeah.
Strawberries, this is years and years ago. That was four decades.
It's a little curved to the strawberries.
Okay, any other public comment?
Make the motion to continue to September tenth.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. See you on September tenth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, my best boy.
I didn't even make Dunkin' Donuts make another driveway entrance, have the line go in there, parking lot and down on the street.
They'll go further in.
Yeah, it's gotta make another curb cut, have them go in the parking lot and down on the street.
I agree.
The Jersey barriers, if you keep anybody from doing it. Point fair.
Okay. I have a seven-thirty applicant, Masad Family LLC, requesting modification of site plan approval under section nine-point-four-point-one of the Auburn zoning bylaws for parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration on property located at fifty-four Faith Ave. This has been continued from seven-twenty-three-nineteen. I believe, Adam, if I'm right, this is just to give an update?
Correct.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Michael Scott. I'm an engineer at W D.
We don't have to open the public hearing.
No.
Because we didn't close yet.
Yeah, suppose it's still open, still open. Sorry. I met last week with Adam and Mr. Coyle. If you've been in the area of Faith Avenue recently, you know that the roadway that was approved a year or so ago has been constructed. We've performed an ASBILT survey, looked at the improvements that were required. With two minor exceptions, the work's done. One of the exceptions is there's a utility pole on the edge of where the road comes around and connects to the old road that needs to be relocated. And I'm trying to find out where that stands in terms of that process with National Grid.
Good luck.
Yeah, and then, well, if the contractor initiated it, that's what I'm trying to find out. And secondly, there's a small stormwater basin, which is kind of in the remote corner behind the lot that Mr. Mas had constructed. A portion of that was within the traveled way of Faith Ave, so they couldn't finish it because people were still using the road at the time. Other than that, the work's complete.
Is that the one that I talked about not going under where it had been going and onto the on-ramp of the Mass Pike or...
Right, so this, so there's a ditch now that runs along, correct. This, there's a ditch that runs along the old section of Faith Ave, dumps out.
Because it was one that used to go down and out onto that on-ramp.
That's, that's related to the parking lot, I believe, you're talking about, which is a different one. This is, was built for the road. I believe you're talking about the area that, I know there's a little, you built the parking lot on the other side of the road simultaneously or concurrently. I'm not too familiar with where that construction stands other than the conversation we had last week. So in short, we've got the ASBILT. There's a little bit of work remaining to be done, but the, the process is, I understand it, you're holding off on, you can't approve the site plan because it shows work on the town layout. So the, there was special legislation created to allow... So the, there was special legislation created, uh, to allow, uh, the selectmen to accept and then the, the roadway, uh, abandon the old roadway, discontinue and abandon the old roadway and transfer that land, that's town-owned land, uh, to the Masses. So we're sort of on the doorstep of that. I'm gonna be providing Adam and, uh, Bill Coyle and yourselves, uh, ASBIL. So we have an acceptance plan showing the bounds are in, where they're supposed to be. Uh, we, essentially, it's the subdivision plan, but with some additional notes. Mr. Mass and who, uh, sorry, Mr. Madaus, who is Mr. Mass's attorney, and Mr. Henigan worked on easements. Mr. Madaus would like a little more, uh, specificity on the plan, who is, where the easements are going, who owns what land presently. It's a combination of town-owned land and, um, land under easements, which would be in part controlled by the state. So the state DOT has agreed to accept an easement from Mr. Mass, if you recall, all this stuff. So there's a bunch of land transfer components, so where the acceptance plan is more detailed in terms of what land is presently owned by whom and who's getting what, and easements that you folks will be getting as a town from Mr. Mass. Um, and then there's an ASBIL plan of, of the road and the off-site improvements or the drainage that runs away from the road. Um, so we'll provide those. Was hoping to come back in two weeks and if you folks have had the opportunity to be out there and if there's any commentary, additional comments from, um, Adam or Bill and Mr. Coyle gave a handful last week, um, or yourselves, that we can wrap the plans up so that you can make a recommendation to the selectmen to move this to them. And I know Mr. Mass, or Mr. Madaus and Mr. Henigan have been working together, um, on the easements, just, but just so that you're aware that we're hopefully within a few weeks of going to the selectmen for the, uh, the transfer. Which would then allow Mr. Mass to come back and hopefully finalize the site plan with you. He's got improvements on site, landscaping and other things to be done.
Steve?
Also.
Do we have a motion to continue to September 10th? All right with you?
Yeah, we'll get the stuff done, um, Mr. Menard and Mr. Coyle.
Oh, any, uh, public comment?
Make a motion? To continue?
To September 10th.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Other business. Fall Town Meeting Propose Zoning Changes For Board To Consider Sponsoring Zoning Map For Regional Mall Overway District And Tiny Homes. Let's skip that one and go to Site Plan Modification. KFC Taco Bell, 820, 824 Southwood Street. Signs Zoning And Clearance Bar. The apple in present? Would you come up to the table, please, and state your name and...
Eric LaFrance, approved contracting.
So they're looking to, basically add some signage and awning and, um...
Can you put that one up there?
Clearance bar for the drive-thru. Someone will need to consider, well, it's indeed a minor modification and then vote on a modification, so...
Why don't you explain what you want to do?
We're actually taking the drive-through, there's a clearance bar sign that's coming down and getting relocated, and we're putting it in. I think we didn't have the spec as far how it was actually gonna get installed, so we notified the architect this afternoon, they sent it over. I live in Matapoisette, so I was not able to get it, print it on a plotter and get it over to you guys today. So I don't actually have it, but I can submit it via email, the tomorrow or later. This is just the same plans that I have here, and I guess you had some questions about, um, safety for the smoke detectors?
That would be...
On the demo?
Fire department.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought that was part of, I apologize.
So the, what other things are you doing here? Was only, wasn't it, there's some other things, Adam, like you want a, an approval to put your new, uh, clearance bar up?
Moving the clearance bar, just going from here...
Yes.
Over to here?
Yeah, it's going, it's going here, so when you come through the drive-through, you don't hit the awning. It's just basically a safety bar, it doesn't move.
And what else are you doing?
What else are we doing at that location or what else is, was your question?
What were the other things?
The awning?
So there's awnings around to the facade.
You didn't have the specs on how the awnings were actually gonna get attached. Ontech is doing the work and I have those plans as well, the architect sent those over, so I can send those tomorrow.
So I think, um, they'll need those for the building.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So for this board, it's really just the...
The bar?
Bar and the awnings and signs.
Steve?
I'd say it's a minor improvement.
I agree.
Just a little bit of a vote, that's minor, and then a separate vote...
Do we have a motion to state that we consider this to be a minor modification?
Make that motion, minor modification, our actual approving it would be a, an approval, I bet it's minor, but that's fine.
I'll, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve their request?
Make a motion to approve their request?
For the, uh...
I'll second it.
Clearance bar and... Do second, who seconded it?
Me.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote, good luck. You sat patiently.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. Fall Town Meeting Propose Zoning Changes For Board To Consider Sponsoring Zoning Map For Regional Mall Overway District And Tiny Homes.
So I'm asking the board to support three zoning, three zoning changes. One is, I think I include, in fact, it, um, basically the, the Sword Street Industrial Park, there's several parcels that are split between industrial and residential. Part of the change would be to have mall industrial, if it makes sense. They originally drew the map how many years ago, but they didn't follow the parcel line, but proposed change would correct the parcel lines and could also extend the district, the industrial park district down Southwood Street on the west side only, where Poller is and, uh, Alice is down there.
Sure.
Kind of, it's already the same type of business that's already down there. So I guess, um, there's been some trouble with some of the businesses trying to find tenants because of the way it's zoned. Just would hopefully kind of address that issue, there's several vacant properties.
This is being entirely like the Sword Street?
Um, yeah.
For that whole industrial park? But not extending into the neighborhood at all?
No, not at all.
Those property lines up in Colonial Drive and then down in Woodland and all of that?
Yeah.
Got to stay the same.
Close your 4th Street to, to the right.
So, this is how it is currently. We can see some of the buildings, like this building is half industrial, half residential, it makes no sense in the neighborhood.
Correct.
So we'll keep, adjust all the lines here and extend the industrial park down here to Sword Street, the rest of Sword Street to Southbridge.
That makes sense.
Towards, towards the western line.
North.
Already industrial on this side of Southbridge, it would stay industrial, it's the industrial park instead of just industrial.
Makes sense.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. So just try to make it a more viable area, kind of make some needed adjustments. So that's one change. Another change is, um, the tiny homes, that was approved a couple months spring. Um, the state decided not to adopt the building code 2018. There's a mention of 2018 building code appendix Q in the, the bylaw, so Henigan recommended adding some verbiage to basically allow the town to adopt that appendix of the building code. So since the state's not going to, we can, we can adopt it. It's just tweaking of the file out of...
Why was the state not gonna agree?
They're going to 2020 instead of 2018, skipping...
Well, they might approve it in 2020, but not.
Yeah. And that won't be until 2021 at the earliest, talking, three years out at best.
So just that section of the building code, that, that was a Q?
Just the appendix Q, all the addresses tiny homes. There's a couple lines in there specifically saying that the town will adopt that particular appendix. Uh, and the third change is on wording to the regional mall district. They're looking to have zero setbacks on the property, um, for, basically it's to allow the mall to remain viable and to have financial options. What started the proposal is a three-liner building, uh, attached to the mall so that there's...
There are a lot line there.
There's a lot line there, but if they want to, say, sell the building or have the building set up separately with a probably a visa.
Business condos or...
I would call it just, just every line as like its own individual entity and not part of, it's part of the mall entity, it's just kind of a way to them to...
They have to have frontage and...
They have to have frontage.
On Brotherton Way and...
Yeah. They have to have setbacks, meaning this, the...
Is it being done for the purpose of Reliant?
That, not specifically, but that was kind of where it all started. I mean, the other big box, the big box for Sears and Macy's, that, um, they may or may not do well, Sears, you know, that they've had their fiscal troubles. Having a zero lot lines may provide, say condos want to go or movie theater or...
Sure.
Whatever else may want to go in there, having kind of their own separate entity apart from the main mall may be more attractive to, to Simon to keep it kind of viable financially.
But Sears is part of the mall existing, Macy's...
Those are Reliant malls.
But they're basically be like a lot, line or just...
It's gonna be like a...
Yeah, Reliant's...
It's gonna sound like a...
Keep the estate up.
Yeah.
Connect the condos, you own this from here to here, you own this from here to here, you own this from here to here.
That's basically, I mean, uh, those buildings connected like that all over the cities and what's there. Burlington, I think it's the mall in Burlington has a similar setup, there's zero setbacks.
See, all that kind of the walls.
Yeah. And there have to be some kind of operational agreement, but that's kind of outdone to make sure they play nice to each other. So there is just a couple of lines in, um, the, the mall district that will, basically allow this to happen. There was also, um, wording to allow medical use at the mall, which currently it's not allowed to use, but we've got to get a variance for a lot of Reliant to go there, so this was bringing to conformity.
I thought they did that before they started their thing, they went before.
Yeah, they get the variance for this one.
Got the variance for that.
Yeah. They won't need to in the future if we change...
Right.
Do we want to add on to what they have there?
Yeah, if anybody want, if they want to change the usage now, they will have to get those variances.
If Reliant want to expand, per se, because they have to come back, there'd be more, more to jump through if they want to expand. So I included it, the wording in your pack, because I, I think, um, I don't think they're controversial, but what do I know? It's town meeting, um, but if the board will be available to, you know, to, um, support them, send them to Board of Selectmen, they meet in two weeks.
Who's them?
Board of Selectmen.
No, but you said...
The three changes.
It's four, it changes. Well, um, I saved the ones.
Do we need a motion?
I don't think it's a bad use to...
No.
...mall, when it comes in to add, have the medical facility there.
What, what other consequences are we not considering that we do that? Because right now, we still have some control over that.
Well, we, we, one thing that we alleviate is, if it was all, I think, would be the Christmas and holiday traffic that comes because of it.
I'm just saying, like, right now, we can still approve, they'll come before us and approve it if we...
Oh, I, it has to all come before us still.
Yeah.
It still does, okay.
I don't know how you do it.
It's the variance, record of zoning, I think. Okay.
The variance is supposed to be a hardship and remain up, you'll prove the hardship.
Okay.
So down the road, you could have Reliant, you could have Shields MRI, you could have a kidney place, could be a whole medical facility there, which wouldn't be a bad idea.
No.
Because balls dying.
No, and they, they really want to make sure that that particular facility remains viable facility. Malls have had their issues in the past 10 years.
Correct.
But we still want to maintain our rate to be able to look at it.
Absolutely.
This will allow split usage too, right?
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
I think very much it interests...
Steve, you in favor? I'm supporting all three or two or one?
I'm in favor of all three.
Nicholas?
I'm also in favor of all three, Ron.
Okay.
All set, all three.
All three. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to...
Send a letter of recommendation to the selectmen, the sponsorship of these three zoning variances.
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Um, reorg, um...
Will postpone, I still spoke to Adam today earlier, moving with this, and, uh, I said I'd like to postpone the reorganization till Wendy is present.
Absolutely.
Because, uh, you know, I think the way we have been doing it, she would have been the one that, she'll stay as another, I think that was the six-month part she did as the thing, I think. And then she'll go, she'll stay for the next year as chairman and John will become vice chairman. If it's, you know, it's all, whoever, we still have the right to vote and whatever, so...
You guys, um, you want to play it?
Okay.
CMR PC.
Delicates an authorization for local planning assistance. I don't want any fighting over this.
The planning board is entitled to two delegates to CMR PC. Um, the planning board can vote on these two delegates, you know, currently it's you, Scott.
I serve at that.
Steve. Do you want to continue as delegates? Um, it's actually kind of important that somebody goes to the meeting from the town. Um, we've got hours, every time somebody goes for a meeting, that they will do hours for us, so...
You guys vote for me, throw my name in the ring? I'd love to attend.
Hands down, Steve.
All right. You're good.
You want to see it? Good. Steve?
Steve, I'm gonna do it again.
I, I just can't promise I'm gonna make any of the meetings, so...
All right. Yeah, let's see what else wants to do.
Hey, listen, I have a lot going on, Scott knows this a little bit.
If you need a ride, Scott, I can pick you up.
I, I'm President Robert Newt this year, I'm a business kid.
Well, Wendy, because she's not here, she's on, I went out.
Nah, who am I gonna...
In the interval, I need to...
I'll, I'll accept it.
This might not go.
So do you want to have a vote? No, not at the moment.
I have to refuse myself from the vote?
No.
Do we have a motion to approve Steve and Scott as the members to attend CMR PC?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Nick made it, John seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Uh, and the other part, the authorization for local planning assistance, this is why it's important that somebody goes to the meetings.
Is that the hours?
That's, yeah, CMR PC gives the town, they'll do 12 hours of work for the town a year, just that's part of their contract as the regional planning agency. Every meeting that someone goes to, or 12 hours, gets actually 12, but it's those extra hours. So if somebody goes to the quarterly meeting, that's an hour, somebody goes to, um, they have their...
So the 12 could go up to 14 or 15 or something?
Yeah, up to 24, that's...
In a year?
In a year. Just a fair amount of time. Um, but they started a new thing this year where they have, your, the planning board has to authorize somebody from the town to expend those hours, whether it's me or the accessory, doesn't some towns or whoever.
Leave it with Adam to use those hours how he sees fit. Unless after any of you go to the meeting, you see something else. We might determine something different and say, geez, we'd like to try this, or have someone look at this, and then we can...
Just tell me.
Just tell Adam, and he can say, okay, well...
Do you get compensated or comped for that?
Going to the meetings, great, my, yeah.
The job is for 100 hours.
He's just really passionate about his job, John.
I would have handed it over.
All right, it's the other guy.
That's... My intent really was always to do mapping, because I don't know the system. Yeah, that's not my thing, so if they can do some nice maps for us. Whatever else comes up.
Those aquifer maps and stuff that we used to have up on the board here. So, you know, the zoning areas, the aquifer maps and stuff like that are something new and colorful. It'd be good, bigger.
I like it. Next color line, so it doesn't matter.
Did I make a motion to hold on?
No.
The gals?
I will make a motion to vote to approve Adam as the delegate.
Authorize Adam to...
You authorized our expenditure.
Yeah. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, I'm going to ask Adam to speak and at least give us an update before we leave on the Sword Street thing and Henigan and FW Web.
You still have to vote on any votes?
Okay, let's do it.
Let's get that out of the way first.
My update will be brief.
There's not much to say.
Minutes are 7/23/19?
I make the motion, we accept the minutes, as is.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adam?
It was on vacation last week, so we didn't look at it. Nothing's happened with it.
It was on vacation?
Where was it, though?
It's with Superior Court.
Did you guys all get something in the mail?
We all got something in the mail, and...
I haven't received anything yet.
Nope.
They were going for preliminary and...
Yeah, were the results of that initial motion? I think there was already a motion hearing.
They... I don't know.
And we don't need to personally respond to the...
That was the one where we failed to substantiate that we considered it a minor change.
Allegedly.
Yeah. We thought about it, and we did, we considered it minor. And we still consider it minor.
Our action of approving it was a finding of a minor modification.
Correct.
It was.
But Henigan, Stan Elling, and FW Web also has a lawyer that's handling for FW Web, so... When there is information, I'm told to share, I'll share.
There is an answer by date, and I just want to make sure we don't get defaulted and prejudice the town in any way, because we're individually named, that's my only concern. So if we have to get an answer, and I just want to make sure Attorney Henigan tells us as much. I mean, I assume he answers for the board collectively, but I just want to...
Yeah, whatever's going on, if there's something we're supposed to do, it should be notified immediately.
And you'll be notified immediately if something goes on.
We would be notified by Attorney Henigan's office, rather than...
Correct.
They've got a clue, me and Darlene and whoever else, that needs to be duly...
Right. Okay.
Anything else for anyone?
Nope.
Adam, Rachel, Steve, yeah?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
See you September 10th.